We're going to do next week because the sheriff's not around.
Yeah.
Well, there you go.
New York.
Here's the service.
Morning. Yeah. Yep.
Just so that I may share with all of them. And then I just call.
Yeah.
I may have to say, I'm not going to. I want to stay around to do that.
We're going to do Candy, Candy, we're going to do her next week.
Oh, okay.
Because sheriff's not around this week.
Yeah. We're live.
Okay.
Just to give me a idea.
Okay, good morning. Ask you to please rise for the prayer and we pledge allegiance. Dear gracious God, we gather here today with a heartfelt thankfulness. We thank you for the beautiful valley we live in with the four seasons that we have the privilege to enjoy. We are in all of your beauty and creation. The spring season brings new life and season of hope. We continue to call upon you for our hope. We know you hear our callings for health, whether it be physical, mental, spiritual, and our financial needs. Restore us, restoring us a new season of Easter and spring that brings new life. We ask you to sustain and provide strength to our healthcare and emergency workers as they continue on the front lines in this battle of an enemy that wants to take life. Provide them health as they are at risk to help others. We thank you for the medications, the vaccines, and the treatment available to battle this virus. Now, we ask for your wisdom to govern during a time that is full of conflict and turmoil. Give us the ability to work together in harmony, even when there's a difference of opinion or honest disagreement. We pray for the agenda set forth today, that our decisions will please you and would be beneficial to those who work and live in our beloved valley. These things we pray in your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time of convenience, commissioners, public meeting, and Commissioner Massar might have to leave a little early, just wanted to make that note for the record and then enjoy us by phone. At this time, I'll ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Officer, aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Ask for a public comment on agenda items only at this time. Good hearing that, we'll move on.
1.6, we are presenting a proclamation today for safe digging month, and Commissioner Massar is going to read that.
Whereas the month of April 2021 recognizes as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month and the initiative sponsored by the Pennsylvania 811, a utility notification information center celebrating its 49th year of continuous service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas Pennsylvania 811 received close to 992,000 excavation notifications in 2020 and transmitted approximately 6.6 million notifications to their member facilities, owners, and operators, allowing essential utility and construction crews to provide vital underground services and repair of critical infrastructure to communities throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas when dialing 811 at least three businesses days before digging, a homeowner or a contractor is connected to a unique service that notifies the appropriate underground utility operators in the municipality in which the work will be performed. And whereas by notifying 811 of their intent to dig, the homeowner or contractor is knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities, themselves, the work crew, and their neighbors from any unsafe digging practices within their communities. Whereas upon receiving the notification from the Pennsylvania 811, the facility owners and operators dispersed to the said work site to mark the approximate location of the underground utility lines with flags, paints, or both, to establish an 18-inch tolerance zone of the outside wall or edge of their line or facility. And now therefore, it resolve that the county of Lycoming, in support of the Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law, PA Act 287 of 1974 as amended, we do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month. And encourage all Pennsylvanians to visit the Pennsylvania 811 website at www.pawone.org for information about digging safely. Signed by Scott Mesker, Chairman, Tony Masser, Vice Chair, and Rick Marabito, Secretary. And I will add, you know, we've been in the construction business for a while, and when you're, when you don't follow the rules and you dig because you just think, nobody would ever put anything in there, right? You can be wrong. And I was to two places where they dug up a gas line and they dug up a water line, which caused tremendous damage and actually scared the hell out of everybody. So it is important to call this 811 dig for your safeties, your worker safeties, most important, your own safety and the neighbors around it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Lipka was going to call in on behalf of receiving that.
Okay.
Mark, are you on the line?
Yes, good morning, and thank you for inviting me to join your commissioners' meeting here this morning. On behalf of Pennsylvania 811, I greatly appreciate Lycoming County signing and proclaiming April as Safe Digging Month. As the commissioner said, Pennsylvania 1 Call definitely has had a lot of big notifications come through the system. In 2020, we had almost a million, and 2019, we had over a million, which was the first time that the call center had seen over a million big notifications come through the system. And as far as 2021 goes, we are on par to meet or surpass that 1 million ticket mark for work being done underground for that. And it equates to possibly over 7 million locates for those underground lines, which are integral for not only keeping those lines intact and away from damage, but keeping the excavators and those that are working around them safe from any accidents that happen. So we appreciate everything that you do to help promote and partner with Pennsylvania 811. And if anybody has any questions, all of our information, contact information, locate information is at our website at www.penumeral1cal.org. So thank you very much, once again.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
And keep up the good work.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
We're going to move on to employee service awards. Our first one on the list, Gerald Ross from the coroner's office, is a 10-year service pin.
Okay. Gerald, would I come up and say anything? Gerald, you're not too busy these days, are you?
Far too busy.
Yeah, that's another statement. We thank you for your service, Gerald. You're basically an employee that is never asleep. You're constantly at work with your office and through this pandemic, you've demonstrated an enormous amount of dedication to the county, and we thank you for your service.
Gerald, we want you to know that we are still working to try to sort out this situation with the building. We hope that with the addition of that extra person that it's helped somewhat, and we're going to be in touch with you about, the coroner's not here today, I don't think, but we do thank you for the 10 years, and we are trying to sort out that building. So it's not something that's been forgotten.
That's for sure.
We're waiting for some material.
How hard we've been working on it.
Yeah.
So we're getting there, so hopefully it'll happen soon.
I'll go out on a limb on this one. I think you probably are one of the most toughest jobs since anyone. Really difficult, and we appreciate your service, and we'll see how this additional guy works out. And hopefully, hopefully, if we can correct the scheduling, we'll do everything in our power to do so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, just to note, it was 10 years since you had a new person, right, Gerald?
No, we've had three deputies for a couple of years each for the last six years.
So it's been six years since you added? I don't mean new faces come and go, I mean the change in the staffing.
In my position, it's Bart and then he really short.
Yeah, but he meant new additional staff.
New additional staff to the department.
Yeah, no, we've been additional staff, it's been since '14.
Yeah. So we thank you for working under those conditions also.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have your position?
Yeah.
Next, we have Corey Person from APO, and he's receiving a 20-year pin today.
Corey, I work directly with you, and I can't believe it's been 20 years. I mean, they said this to me the other day, go, he hasn't been here 20 years, it's not possible. But our community service program, Corey runs for the county, it's one of the best in the state, if not the best in the state. It's been recognized over the years. John Ed, would you like to say anything on behalf of Corey?
Sure. Some of you may not be aware, but Corey started his career in maintenance.
Can you come up because they can't hear you on, out in hinterland?
Yeah, if you just state your name and your department for the record. Thank you.
Hi, Ed McCoy, Chief of the Adult Probation Office. Which some of you may not know, but Corey started his career with the county here in the maintenance department. And then when Don Warner had retired, Corey took over the community service program. And as Commissioner Mesker was alluding to, we contribute thousands of hours to townships, municipalities, whether it be flood recovery, cleaning up Little League baseball fields, painting, you name it, we'll provide the manpower. So everyone knows is that the court will issue every defendant 50 hours of community service, a minimum of 50 hours. And Corey coordinates all those individuals and all those hours and does a nice job.
Thank you. How many sites do we have now, Corey?
Forty, 45 right now.
Forty-five sites?
Forty-five, fifty.
And they're nonprofits, they could be churches and?
Yep, churches, institutions.
So tremendous work. And the great thing is it gives the offender a sense of ability about giving back. And often they do good enough work, you can make a reference for a job, if they've been looking for employment, you can do a job reference for them, and it has led to employment for...
Yeah, as I say, SPTA hires some of the community service people, they've been hired part-time, so it's kind of nice. With COVID now, they're not really doing a lot, but, but yeah, they've hired, a couple sites hired some people.
Great. Commissioners?
So Corey, how long were you in maintenance before you moved over?
I believe it was nine years, eight years, nine years.
Nine, okay. Well, that's great, so you've seen a lot of different parts of the county. It's also one of the things about working at the county that's a real positive, right? Because it helps people find out where they want to be ultimately. But I also want to thank you for 20 years, that's a long time, and it's, I've met many people in the community who've been through the community service program, and they speak highly of it. So that speaks highly of you, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, 20 years is a long time. The Adult Probation Office has some really good people working for it. And it's not an easy job either. But I guess when you look back at some of the lives that you have affected, you know, it really, I guess it's rewarding.
Yeah.
You know, so thanks for your service.
Hey, John, here. Come on up for a picture. Twenty years. Twenty years, right here.
You're the most mellow one.
Yeah.
You're the low-key guy in the queue.
I'm in the middle.
You can take it off. Ready? There we go. Next, we have Adam Welteroth from the prison, receiving a 10-year service pin.
Hi, Adam, good morning. Is Harry here? Harry, you want to come up, say a few words on behalf of Adam? How you doing?
Doing good, thank you. Thank you very much. In case I hit you right there. First of all, commissioners, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Harry Rogers, I'm the bail release program manager. Working with Adam has given us an opportunity to do quite a bit of different things. With the change of the bail program in the past years, we've seen the paradigms being challenged for change and change for the improvement of how we do things in Lycoming County. And with those changes, it requires special individuals who are willing to do things in a different manner or to adopt new challenges. And Adam's one of those individuals who've made that situation much more smoother and actually with much more success. Deputy Warden Ebner brought in the idea of taking on the mental health individuals in the prison system and trying to work with that population and get them unnecessarily, taking the ones unnecessarily staying in the prison, and get them back into the community and be in a productive member of that community. But that required a changing of our whole way of doing supervision and challenges that goes with that. And with individuals like Adam, we've been able to do that. And it's just very important that, you know, the changes are great and for what it brings to the public, but the individuals who make them happen are people like Adam. And I just wanted to say thanks, Adam, for your help, and glad that you came aboard with us, and we look forward to continuing to meet these challenges in the future. Commissioners, I'd like to say thank you for your time and have a great day.
And you started at PRC, correct?
I did.
How many, come on up. How many years were you at PRC?
About eight years.
Okay.
I'd definitely like to thank the commissioners for giving me the opportunity, the 10 years of being employed and, you know, when I came out of college and I went into the work field, I always wanted to do a job that I could actually make a difference. And I'm very blessed to have the job currently that I have now, because, you know, the people that I come in contact with, you know, their lives are in turmoil, they've just been charged with a crime, and it can go either way. And, you know, some of our main goals is to make sure that they don't violate bail and also they get the court and their court hearings and everything, but, you know, a personal goal that, you know, myself and Harry Rogers is helping still to me and the rest of my team here, is that we get these individuals, we make them a little bit better coming away from us than they were when they came to us. So I really appreciate the opportunity, I love it. To be honest with you, I would pay you to give me the opportunity to do this job rather than you guys pay me, but don't tell my wife that.
Don't tell us that.
But thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity.
You're serious.
Well, Adam, thank you. I just can't believe it's been 10 years that you've been with the prison and, you know, your whole demeanor is so important, you obviously just, I can tell, I mean, dealing with folks with mental health issues is very hard, right? It's hard to deal with, all of us have difficulties dealing with each other sometimes, and we may not even have mental health issues, but I want to thank you for the 10 years you've given to the people of the community, because to have that philosophy of having them go away a little bit better than when they came in is something that's really, really to be admired, and I want to thank the bail release program and you personally for the 10 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you'd like to say anything?
No, I think that, I think that covers, Adam's taken to this type of work very well. He's been instrumental in helping transition to, you know, different avenues that we keep looking into, and he was also a very valuable member out at the Pre-Release Center in his time there for us, so we wish him continued success and congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Man, our friend Dave is still there, just so you know.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, he, his mentorship, even within his passing, is still, I can still hear him in my head, you know, coaching me and helping me out during tough times, so definitely.
I remember when we moved you over, you know, and when we reflect back to at least when I first came, and where adult probation was and our perception of what adult probation did and bail release, it just emerged and evolved over the 10 years I've been here to something that is really extraordinary. When you think of how you get out there, you get personally involved in adult probation, now you're out on the road a heck of a lot more than what you ever were, and it does have an impact, not only on the people that you're working with, but our community. Commissioner Marabito probably, at one of our prison board meetings, asked to have a mentally ill who was on psychotropic medications and whatnot, to put it on our reports, so we had a better knowledge, a better understanding of what you're dealing with, you know? And I think that was a great move. I think we were alarmed at how many people, you know, that committed crimes did have some mental illness issues. And that gives us a baseline that, you know, we can make decisions with. So I hope that the meetings that we have with the prison, with APO and bail release that is productive and that you continue down your path of success, because we appreciate you being here.
And we need to give a shout out to Chris Ebner, because he really, he, I don't know whether I made the suggestion, I may, but he's taken and he's gone beyond what anybody could expect in terms of understanding every month where we're at, and we really appreciate that, Deputy Warden Ebner, and it's all of you, I mean, and you have great mentors to look up to, Adam, and I'm sure they're learning from you also, but they, just that information helps us, and Deputy Warden Ebner's done a great job of pulling that together for us.
Yeah, Chris is really spearheaded the mental.
Yeah, and the subcommittee. But Adam, you've got those shoes to fill when they're, when they're gone. Not that you're leaving.
Within the next 60 days.
But thank you, Adam, well, thank you.
This is Warden Shoemaker, I couldn't attend today, but I did want to call in. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to award Adam today and to celebrate Adam. He brings an enthusiasm and an energy to the job, and that's, you can see that just in how he handles his clients, how he handles his caseload, and how he conducts himself professionally. He is, he's an asset to our team, and I want to congratulate him on his 10-year anniversary and look forward to continuing to work with him in the future.
Awesome, thanks, Warden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more, and I often say this is the best part of my job, is recognizing our employees, because the dedication of them, as you can see, we have four here today, and you have 60 years, and most of our employees stay with the county, they're the assets of the county, that's what, our biggest asset of the county is our employees and the work they provide for the community. And so we have one more here, and?
Yeah, Denise Mosher from the Conservation District, she's receiving her 20-year pin today.
What are you, Denise, we have somebody here to speak on your behalf? Oh, okay. State your name when you get to the microphone, you can remove your mask when you get up there, thank you.
My name is Greg Voncel, I'm the district manager with the Conservation District. And just to start off to definitely echo what Commissioner Mesker said, is longevity is an invaluable asset. And, you know, any more people, they job hop, or they're here and they're gone before you can get to know them. And I think the important thing is for us to definitely recognize the employees, but also realize what makes an employee stays is the supporting cast. So that's all of us, that's the people within the county. And it's a great place to work. I've only been here for four months, but I can tell you that Denise is the glue that holds the Conservation District together. As far as finances, she handles up to 12 accounts at one time. She is, she's pretty much our office mom, so to speak, and you need that sometimes, you know, we're all a pretty young crowd, or young group, and Denise has definitely helped me in my transition, and she's, she's pretty much the face of the district, if people come in, they've seen her, they know her, they trust her, and that's what you also get with longevity. So I'd like to thank Denise for her efforts with the district, and I'm happy that she's at her midway point in her career.
Well said.
Did she give you that to read? No. That was awesome.
Denise, you'd like to say something?
I appreciate.
You want to come up? Thank you.
Having been within the county for 20 years, working with Tom and Mark and now Greg, it's always been a very enjoyable and a learning experience, always meeting new people, and it's a great place to work. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Denise, don't go yet. I want to echo what Greg said, I mean, think about that, you worked with three different directors of this Conservation District, and you've kept us on steady course, quietly in the background, when we come to the meetings, all the papers are ready, the books are balanced. Quietly in the background, when we come to the meetings, all the papers are ready, the books are balanced, the documents are there. And that keeps the board engaged and it keeps the people, and I know sometimes, right, we've got a, it keeps the board engaged big time to get people from the community who will come and be involved for two and a half hours each month, you know? In addition to the other things. So, you really have done a fabulous job. And I won't call you the mom of the.
It's okay.
I'll call you the spirited lady.
Okay, whoa, my goodness. Thank you.
Because as Greg said, you have another twenty years. But on behalf of the people of the county, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And for Greg to recognize all those qualities, you know, you do, you do shine.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, good to see you.
You too.
Thanks, Tom.
I'd get one more. That one was blurry.
Thank you, thank you.
So, now we're moving on to the county's payable cash requirements report with Nikki Gottschall.
Good morning, commissioners. The cash requirement summary is 1.1 million this week. One thing to note, though, 548,000 of it is outside agency payments. Did you have any questions for me?
Any comments, questions? Okay, have a motion accept?
Come on.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
TDA actions with Roxanne Greco.
Where are you Roxanne?
Good morning, Commissioner. Commissioners, this morning we're asking to approve updates to the TD, uh, the TDA in the District Attorney's Office and Central Processing Center. Reclassification of one part-time central processing officer to a part-time director of central processing. And also the reclassification of one part-time central processing officer to a part-time assistant director of central processing.
Okay. We should just give a quick explanation to the public. When they hear central processing, what are we processing, right? We're processing people who are alleged to have committed crimes or DUIs or other.
This, this is a DUI center.
DUIs. Specifically the DUI, right. Okay, and these are paid for out of fees that we collect from people who commit DUIs.
That's correct.
But that's, so that people understand, the county plays a very important role in that, on a countywide basis.
Yes, they're taken there and they're fingerprinted and processed so that the officer can get back on duty. He's not tied up with hours and hours of doing the administrative work of it.
And if you think about how important that is, is many of our communities that have police forces have one or two police officers. And so, they don't have, they don't have a lot of time to do that, so.
There are areas at times where police officers are babysitting these prisoners for hours.
Right.
You know, so.
Okay, have a motion accept?
I'll move to approve.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel actions with Roxanne.
Commissioners, in the DA's office, Central Processing Center, Joseph W. Hope as a part-time reclassification to Director of Central Processing, pay grade CPO, $23 an hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually. And this to be effective April 18th, 2021. In the DA's office, Central Processing Center, Timothy B. Nelson as a part-time reclassification to Assistant Director of Central Processing, pay grade CPO, $21 an hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually, effective April 18th, 2021. In planning and community development, Mark L. Hawes as a full-time replacement subdivision and land development administrator, pay grade eight, $38,933.97 annually, effective April 19th, 2021. At pre-release, Caitlin N. Lunger, full-time replacement promotion, female work crew foreman, pay grade seven, $18.26 an hour, effective April 18th, 2021. At pre-release, Timothy P. Leibensberger as a full-time replacement resident supervisor, pay grade six, $16.76 an hour, effective April 19th, 2021. And finally, in the District Attorney's Office, Karina Schaefer as a full-time replacement clerk three, pay grade four, $14.09 an hour, effective April 12th, 2021.
Okay, any questions or comments on these personnel actions?
Just to note that they're all replacements except for the two central processing, which is actually coming out of the central processing account, so.
Okay, have a motion?
I'll move to approve the personnel action.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. This time a recess, Commissioners' public meeting. And we will convene the salary board at this time.
Commissioners, we're asking you to approve an update to the salary schedule in the District Attorney's Office at Central Processing Center. The reclassification of one part-time central processing officer to a part-time director of central processing at $23 an hour. And the reclassification of one part-time central processing officer to a part-time assistant director of central processing at $21 an hour.
I just want to make a note also that the county, I think, is going to benefit from having Chief Hope, who recently retired, coming on in this position, at a part-time position. Because obviously, he brings with him literally twenty-five years of experience. So, we are hopeful that his experience will help to contribute positively to that. We, I mean, we know, and I shouldn't say we're hopeful, we do know it will. We want to thank him for that and thank him for the years of service he gave.
Good point. Thank you. Do you want to ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. This time we'll adjourn the salary board and we will reconvene the Commissioners' public meeting.
All right, we'll move on to action items. Maya Toon is here. She has 6.1 to 6.5. And you're also going to do 6.9, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll just let you go through them.
Where are you Maya?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Can you state your name and what department you're with?
Sure. Maya Toon, Chief Procurement Officer with the Purchasing Office.
Thank you.
The first item I have before you is a grant and monitoring agreement. It's with Central Pennsylvania Gold Star Family Monument. We are going to be, excuse me, utilizing Act 13 legacy funds. $43,000 will go towards the Gold Star Families and $7,000 for the Intruder Project at LeCombe County Veterans Memorial Park.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Well, I just want to thank Bart and Connie Howard for coming and meeting with us. And thank them also for the service and all the, all the families who are represented by Gold Star. For our constituents who don't know, a Gold Star family is a family who has lost someone in service. And it's our way as a community of recognizing them for decades and decades to come with this monument. And I want to thank the Howards and the other folks on the committee who came and spoke to us. And, and also I'd be remiss if I didn't thank John Markley and all the folks on the committee from the Commissioners for all the work they've done at making the Veterans Memorial Park an absolutely outstanding park. And we've done the easy work of giving, providing some financial resources last year we did for, or the year before, I think, and then this year. So that, but they've done the hard work of organizing it and we want to thank them, yeah.
There's one thing that you've learned over the last year with COVID and all is that when we asked them if they wanted to do Zoom, Zoom, they said no. And so, they came in. And you know, you don't get to see the emotion on their face over a phone call. Or the cracking in their voice when they're talking about, you know, these, these heroes. And I was so impressed with the effort that they put in. And it's not just their sons, their daughters. And they're doing this for everyone throughout the state. And actually, I think they went and visited, uh, one, it was in a different state so that they, they could give their expertise to that group of people to say, how did you get this done? And when you look at the memorials and you look at everything that they, they worked so hard for, it was, it was an easy decision for the Commissioners to grant them this award.
Yeah, the Veterans Park is a beautiful memorial and I encourage everybody in the county to visit it and then reflect on our veterans. And at this time, I'd like to also make note that our Veterans Office is, we're looking for individuals to help do the flags on the gravesites throughout the county of our veterans. And it's so important that we recognize them, that they're not forgotten and that we take the time to go out and do this. I know our local little league does it. We call it place a, place a flag for a hero. And I tell the kids before they go out to look at that site, that resting place, look at the person's name and try to learn a little bit about the war that they were in and the freedoms they fought for, for us in that, in that country and the different branch of government they were in, to learn about that. And because it's so important that our youth learn about these veterans and what they've given and the sacrifices they've made. So, I would encourage, if you have an agency or if you just want to do it privately, that you contact our Veterans Office. Ask them how you can get involved in doing the flags at the resting places of our veterans. So, thank you again. Thank you for these individuals that came and spoke to us. Again, please try to visit this, this, this site that's up in the western part of the, of the city. It's a beautiful, beautiful park. Thank you. Have a motion now to accept?
I'll move to approve.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Thank you.
The next item I have for you is to vote on agreement with Susan Mainz. She's going to be providing cross-racial identification expert services for the Public Defender's Office on an absentee basis for trials they have upcoming and it's not to exceed $20,000.
Can I have a motion?
Two. One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
The next item I have is to vote on resolution with TFC National Bank. This is a requirement for the golf carts that we purchased. They came back to us, the financial company, and indicated they needed a resolution to basically state that we were obligated to execute the lease documents. So, that's what this is. It's just a housekeeping item.
Okay, and then we'll be voting the actual lease here shortly. I have a motion to vote on the resolution.
So, yeah, one question. Was this a lease? I thought we were doing the purchase.
No, this was the, this was equipment.
Oh, the equipment.
The equipment, sorry. This is the, yes, yes, yeah, not the, not the golf cart. Sorry, the loan agreement. Yeah.
This is the actual equipment. I think it was three pieces.
It's for the Toro Groundmaster. It's what it is.
Was it three, three pieces total?
Yeah.
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 Yep.
So, actually, oh, I see why you got confused later on.
Yeah, that's because the loan agreement's on too.
All right, yeah, I'm going to approve.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And these payments come out of the golf course revenues.
Correct.
For the public.
The next item I have for you is to vote to award the RFP for tower steel for the two 250 towers, for the Hesker and Hill and Hughesville sites. We're recommending to give it to Daily Tower Services. It's in the amount of $298,918. They were the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay, do we have anybody from DPS, or I mean EMS on the phone?
I'm not sure if they're on.
Beth on you?
I am on the line.
I thought you might be. Do you have any comments?
Uh, no, we reviewed the, we only got two bids and we reviewed them and this is the one that came up as the recommended. So, we are in support of it.
Okay, great.
So Beth, I would just, hopefully you can, I know you've been busy out there, but try to follow up on the request I made about a month ago or so with MCM. This is MCM Consulting. This is the outfit that I believe owes us money back. So, I don't know if you could give us an update at some point in the future. I'd appreciate that.
Okay, I will certainly do that. I have Mr. O'Grady. He's been out for a couple of weeks due to personal matters. But yes, I have reached out to him in reference to that. But this is for the construction of the towers. This is the actual tower steel itself, yes.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
The next item I have is to vote on the loan agreement that we are doing with White Deer Golf Course. This is for the actual golf carts. This is to formalize the agreement that we have with them.
And that's it. Payback would be one time per year for the next eight years and it'd be a 2% interest. Any questions or comments? Any not going to have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Thank you.
Yep, and then the next.
Let me just make a, so these revenues payments are going to come out of, these payments are going to come out of the revenues from the golf course for the public. And things are going well there. I mean, considering everything that's gone on, it's, it's going very well. And they have been able to be positive and we are, there's an advisory committee that's gathered of volunteers from the community who are helping. And again, any, if you go play golf there and you have concerns, feel free to contact us and tell us, you know, about it. But, but everything we, we hear and see on a, on the numbers basis is that the golf course is, is improving. And enough so that it can pay its way.
And I'd add to that, like, I guess maybe, how many years have Lake Casper been there now? Five?
Five years. This is going.
It's the fourth here.
Fourth, that's the fourth, yeah.
It's the fourth, yeah. So, when we realized what was happening, this is the financial position that that golf course was in. By January of every year, the authority would ask us for 150 or so thousand dollars. They, they ran up debt, 300,000. They had accountable, it was a mess. It was a total mess. And today, in January, they have 260,000, $267,000 in the bank. That alone was amazing. And I want to thank the public for hanging in there because it was not easy. Okay, there was a lot of confusion and doubt. And I want to thank, well, Indigo now for doing the job that they did and for all the workers over there because it was a stressful time for sure. I look for better things to happen in the future and congratulations to everyone.
And in fairness to the prior authority, there wasn't, you know, Indigo and White Deer have had a million dollars that was in the bond that they've been able to improve the course with. So, that has helped the, you know, we've actually gone out and moved and spent that. That was bond money that was taken out in 2012 for recreation purposes. But, you know, what, what the Commissioner says is true, that, that we're no longer having to put money into the course. And that 267,000 is the taxpayers' money. Now, we're not just going to pull it out because hopefully the public course is an asset that when people are deciding whether they're going to live here or there, they'll look and they'll say, oh, well, that community has a public golf course. You know, not everybody is going to say that, obviously. I don't want to be, you know, misleading folks. But having that, it's like having a good library. I mean, you can eliminate everything. It's like having the Community Arts Center. You can eliminate everything and then at the end of the day, you'll just have roads and bridges. So, hopefully, we try to build a community that's got some activities for people to do. And I want to thank Commissioner Missair because he's, he's really been the one who, from the. who, from the beginning, when I came on at least, uh, and, uh, heard about this, this golf course, has been the one who's been, been really pushing to, uh, to make it work. And truth be told, I might have thrown in the towel at the, the way the numbers were. Uh, but, uh, we didn't. Last Board of Commissioners hung in there and, uh, obviously this board and, and it's, it's good, it's good news that we, we have an asset that the public can be proud of and that at the same time doesn't drain it financially. So I hope that the public understands the goals that we're trying to accomplish. Think about your children. You want to have your children have something to do and not every kid is going to play golf. But somewhere Tiger Woods, when he was very, very young, was finding something that really spurred an interest in him. And we hope that, you know, maybe we can continue to make that place something that's accessible to families even if they don't golf. That's our ultimate goal.
And it would be remiss of us, not to mention, we want to thank the master gardeners. Uh, they're, they're going to start doing some work up there for us. Uh, so it's not just going to be a golf course, this will be a, a public facility that we hope, uh, we can utilize to its fullest potential.
Yeah. Truth be told, I, I know we're here late, we have to thank those commissioners, uh, sometimes people curse the commissioners back in 88 with the water slide, but really they, they, they laid the vision for all this, right? Who was Commissioner?
I'm not going to.
All right, we'll keep moving ahead.
Sorry, let's just get going.
Yeah, the water slide didn't work out, but.
No, it didn't. Okay.
6.9. Um, then we're going to go down to 6.9. It's to vote on amendment to agreement with Air Management Technologies. Um, what we're doing is strictly just extending the term of the agreement to, um, May 31st, 2021, so that the engineer can complete the necessary drawings for the TSP HVAC project.
Okay, have a motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen McLaughlin is on the phone. Kristen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Morning, Kristen.
6.6 through 6.8.
All right, so 6.6 is a update to your, um, citizen participation plan. Uh, this reflects some information that came out from DCED middle of last year, um, end of last year after your application cycle, the last year had ended. And it is a lot more wordy, but the process has not changed. Um, it is just how DCED prefers to see the types of plans now versus, um, how they used to like to see them. Um, I did want to know one thing, when I initially sent it through Jenny, uh, from the planning department, um, afterwards yesterday, I did know one difference, it is on page seven, it is extremely small, and I did send up, Eileen, I believe, received the updated version to this morning. Uh, section nine, the last paragraph on page seven, um, the original version, the last sentence said, citizens shall, in accordance with the citizen participation plan, the correct wording on that should be the county, um, provide citizens with notice. That is the only difference. Um, but again, this is the exact same process that you currently have, uh, nothing has changed, it has just a change in wording.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do you want me to keep going and you vote all at once?
Yep, we'll vote for all three of them.
Okay. All right, so the second one is the language access plan. Uh, this is an update against your current language access plan. And what I wanted to do with this was to make it clear, you have one municipality that just crosses the threshold to require, uh, translation of specific documents, um, into, uh, what is known by the census as other West Germanic language, which would be, you know, Pennsylvania German. Um, and I wanted to update the plan to make it clear that the requirement to translate vital documents is when that relates to either full county business, um, such as notice of fair housing, um, which we do every year, notice of section 504 officer, which we do every year, and the, um, county public hearings and things. But for example, if we were to do an environmental review that is located in Oregon Station, uh, it doesn't necessarily apply to Washington Township. And so this updated plan just differentiates that requirement to publish in West Germanic, uh, the Pennsylvania Dutch language, those notices. All of those notices do run with a statement that if a translation is necessary, um, we would provide that. So it doesn't take away the, the ability for anyone to request the translation into another language. What it does is just kind of cut down on the number of, um, German, German advertisements in the legal section.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then the last one is quite simple. It is an amendment to the script, your agreement with Depp Inc. for the Homes in Need Program, and it is just changing the termination date of the contract to November 15th, 2021. This is a reflection of an extended extension that we received on that contract from DCED.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on action items 6.6, 6.7, 6.8? Hearing none, get out of motion, accept all three.
I'll move to accept all three.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there. So carry, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day.
You too, thank you.
Jason Yorke, are you on the line?
I am.
Where is Jason?
Jason has 6.10 through 6.16. So I'll just let you go, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
First item, Commissioner, 6.10 is, uh, tarps and change purchased through Southwestern Sales Company. This is a normal 2021 operational budgeted item. Uh, this is purchased in the amount of 13,431 dollars and 58 cents. These are the tarps, uh, that we use to cover every night over the working face and then every morning they roll them back up. Uh, so the tarps, as they go over the waste, they get torn and holes in them every year. So we have to replace them and that's just something we typically budget every year for.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, get out of motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, next item, 6.11. Uh, this is a approving, and this is basically a signing last sheet on the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit for us. Um, this is not a change in price or anything. What this is, is what we typically refer to as our ENS plan, our Erosion Soil Plan. The digger property that will be the 25 acres that's going to be taken off of our, uh, deed will be then have their own ENS plan. So because of the modification and downsizing of our ENS permit, we are just simply doing a, recognizing it in a simple minor permit mod.
Okay. And the digger projects, in reference to the company that'll be purchasing the 25 acres to, uh, bring the, uh, new business to Lake Coming County.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, get out of motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Commissioners, next item, 6.12. This is for the purchase of a F-550, uh, truck that'll be used for our welding, uh, service truck in the amount of 124,333 dollars and 56 cents. We brought this to you, this was a 2021 budgeted item. Um, this will replace our 2001 Ford, I believe, X and F 350 or 450, uh, truck. And it had, we just reached, we've had over $30,000 repairs in it and it's got enough body rust that we can't get it to pass inspection. It has one of the old V10s in it that we have had the Healy coil, every spark plug in the engine as it is. So, um, it's time that we upgrade and get ourselves a, a new weld service truck.
So after 20 years, it's seen a stay?
Yes, sir, it has.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, get out of motion.
I move.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Commissioners, next item, 6.13. This is the, uh, vote to purchase replacement of final drive for one of our, uh, Volvo haul trucks. This is an amount of 27,088 dollars and 51 cents. This is 40 Volvo haul trucks, that's why we're going through, uh, Highway Equipment, who does our high, uh, Volvo repairs. This is not a capital budgeting, this is simply always in our budget for operating, for maintenance and repairs. So we have the funding for our maintenance and repair budget. And we, we need to get that replaced and get the truck back on the road to haul dirt.
Okay, so even though this isn't budgeted, you still have the finances in your general budget to pay for it?
Yeah, I mean, in one aspect, Commissioner, this is a budgeted, we budget for breakdown and so forth through what we call the maintenance and repair budget line item in the operating budget every year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, get out of motion, accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Uh, 6.14. This is with Highway Equipment, uh, professional service agreement. As with most of our vendors, we're going with a new vendor hourly rate for 2021. This is, I mean, we have this budgeted for whenever we use, an as needed basis, um, drop rates. We do a lot of our own repairs, but there is times like this rear axle for the haul truck, we do have them come in and do repairs. Uh, typically it looks like about everything went up five bucks an hour.
So this is as and as needed basis?
Needed basis, yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, get out of motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, item 6.15. This is a simple amendment to the Munsey Creek Township drop off recycling, uh, contract. The Munsey Township, Munsey Creek Township supervisors, we've met with them, uh, Lawrence Droster and I, our recycling coordinator, we took time, meet with them at their meeting. They were having some struggles with the drop off, um, contamination. They've asked to go to a six month contract, which is no big deal. Uh, the contract had outs in it anyways if needed, but they wanted to stick. So this will be an automatically renewing every six months contract, um, for the drop off site.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Well, we, we took our recycling to this outside, uh, facility and, uh, obviously we brought our bags of, of plastics there and most of them went into the holes. But what we did see is a lot of plastic that were laying at the site. And it was because they couldn't get it in the hole. And they're, they're big and they're the types of plastics that you want. Um, we've had many, many phone calls, not only from constituents, but from elected officials who are, are hearing about it constantly. Um, so looking at that, and I'm assuming that they don't have a pickup truck, that they're going to be able to haul this stuff laying around the site, um, I think we need to re-modify that again.
Commissioner, if I might.
Please.
First off, the openings are scaled to size the objects that we can recycle. Um, the large rigid project, uh, products that we're, we were getting were being, um, stored, bailed and stored and we stored rigid products for almost three years without a place to even send them. Um, we really have no outlets for the rigid plastics, your laundry baskets, your kitchen sets, your swimming pool cover. No time did I ever say that, um, swimming pool covers and liners were recyclable. Um, people have been abusing the drop off system for decades. I would also like to reiterate, um, multiple times, like try, that the drop off system is a service provided from the resource management services through the sales of the products and through the scale sales at the landfill. Um, this isn't a taxpayer funded system. We try to provide a system to the host municipalities as a benefit to the citizens. Unfortunately, like Coming County, when I was recycling, uh, coordinator, I did not push for a modified opening. A lot of municipalities already have modified openings based on what is, uh, typically accepted as recyclable products. One of the, one of the situations is, we've discussed, uh, many times with you, is the fluctuation of the markets. And the fluctuations does not help, um, but most of the time, we have no outlets for a lot of the things that people are trying to recycle. Um, the holes are there for a reason. Um, unfortunately, the public has gotten away with giving us bags of used cat litter, bags of diapers, um, just absolute gross things that you or I would not want to have to sort through. The, the, the items are just, it's atrocious. Um, this system, this program, as we've talked, needs to be as sustainable as possible. And that needs to be through the use of the right products that are recyclable. It needs to be so that we're not spending, uh, funds sending stuff to the landfill that we have to sort through. So I guess, uh, while I, I hear the concerns, um, people have no understanding of what is actually going on at the drop offs in the sense that they're seeing the inconvenience and the extra five minutes it takes them to put the bottles in the holes. But if they were on our side and our staff having to rummage through their diapers, their cat litter, their absolute food scraps, um, plastic objects that don't fit in anything, um, the abuse is unreal. And quite frankly, last year with COVID, we had to shut down with the unknowns of the effect of COVID at the time. This was a time we needed to restart the clock. Um, so much so, Commissioner, I would say that other municipalities, other county entities in recycling and landfilling had reached out to us for copies of our design drawings of the boxes because of the, the effectiveness and the concern that they're seeing the same things as well. So it is, it is a necessity, um, it's, it's a necessary evil. People are abusing the drop offs. I, I.
Jason, I, I had no issue with me taking the time to place them into those holes. But when you have a five gallon container, which I would assume is a good, a plastic that can't fit in there, and I saw, you know, it was not, they weren't that much larger than the hole, but they still couldn't fit, so.
Did it have a metal handle?
Uh, some of them did.
Yes. That's, that's a, that is a contamination. Then I have to have staff stop the line, pull the metal handles out and try to get the, the, the buckets so it's salvageable, which when you're running 20 tons an hour, you don't have that time. It goes into the garbage. Um, and so often, so often, those buckets are never just clean buckets. We're getting used tar buckets. I mean, everybody will start tar in their driveways here coming up in a couple of months. Uh, we get a little bit of everything that people have been dumping on us. Used oil containers, the, the large oil jugs, everybody thinks that we have the ability to recycle the oil containers. We don't. The oil inside will always be a contamination and we have no outlet for that. Um, we are only able to keep this service and program available, being able to sell the right products. If our buyers can't buy the materials we're sending them because of contamination, then we have a problem. And that's where we're, that's what we're faced with.
Jason, so it sounds like there's two things going on, but, I mean, obviously there's some people who are using it as a place to dump trash because they don't want to hire a trash person. But there also may be a legitimate lack of education on the part of people as to what they can and can't recycle. So if someone has a plastic sled that's broken, they can't recycle it, right? It's got to go to the trash. Maybe, maybe we can work on trying to do, and I know you do have some, at some of the drop off sites, you have some drawings, but I, I think, we're always going to have people abuse it, but I think that the bigger problem is that people think plastic, recycle, plastic recycle, and it's just not that, that simple. And so we really, maybe you can think about some sort of education campaign, and you've done these over the years, I know that, but maybe even we put a big sign up at each drop off with a picture and, and then an X through what can't be recycled or something. And then, I know you run the ads in the Web Weekly and so forth as to the hours, maybe we, we need to start. Maybe we, we need to start to do some education on what people can and can't recycle.
Well, sir, we, I appreciate that. We do have, we spent good money on some very large decal on the new boxes. We are meeting with Doug NEP News, I believe, today. They called the schedule to do an interview to discuss, I believe, this very topic. That's what our goal is. So we are trying. We will be moving forward with some other outreach. We, I even have my own friends and family call me and say, hey, you got rid of your plastic box. I'm like, no. People were so used to seeing the expanded metal boxes and the steps that they did not take the time to read the, the new labels. I, I can put a sticker on every inch of the boxes and I can't, but I cannot make people read them. We do have label. We have pictures of the containers that's acceptable. It has been a struggle. And I guess I appreciate, in one aspect, while you probably don't appreciate all the attention or the phone calls, I do finally appreciate the attention and it's finally getting to make people realize how bad it's been. We have staff that are spending seven, eight hours on the line and most of their day is just getting through the garbage and through the things that are not recyclable. And that's, that's, that's a shame. We, we have a good program. We, we always tell somebody, if somebody does not want to use the free drop off service, they're more than welcome to call an area hauler that offers single stream and take them up on that. And then the hauler will provide them with a nice 95 gallon tote. It'll be on wheels. It'll be simple. They won't have to go to the box, the drop off. It will be super easy. So there's always that option for the citizens of like Cumming County.
And how much waste do you think is in the single stream?
In the single stream, we're seeing
Contamination, contamination, not waste.
Contamination, you're probably seeing anywhere from eight to 10%. Globally or nationally, you're probably at 20, 25%. But in those containers, you're not fitting an entire pool liner or a solar panel for a pool. Or a kitchen set from your, or your old, your child's old sandbox toy, or sandbox that was plastic. Or your sled. Those are, those are the things that nobody's putting in them and it's, and it's not in bags. When you're a single stream hauler, you have those totes. People don't need to use bags. And it allows us to process the material much faster. The bags do nothing but slow up the line and contaminate. And people don't just give you clean, dry bags of soda cans or beer cans. They are bags with dried cans stuck inside of them with chew spit, cigarette butts, all the other gross stuff that people want to get out of it because that bag has one aluminum can. They decide to give it to us. So
All right, well, I, I agree with Commissioner.
I'm definitely on a soapbox about this because people need to understand what the RMS employees are putting up with long enough. So I appreciate the opportunity.
I, I agree with Commissioner Mayor Beto. We, we need to absolutely have a campaign on, on what is permissible. That's important. I still think that we, we need to discuss this a little bit more into detail. And, you know, especially with the plastics, I can't imagine, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not six foot tall. But I felt like I needed to jump to, to get them in there. And I can't imagine what the elderly are going through trying to reach up and, and put them into those containers. So that's enough said, but we'll, we'll talk about it later.
Jason, you know, I've talked to you on the phone about this. I get a lot of phone calls and I've had township supervisors call me on weekends and, and people, and it's unfortunate. It's come down to where we've had a few ruin it for the majority. Because people will not do it properly, will not follow the rules. They've, they've made these regulations tighter so that there isn't contamination in the recyclables. But my concern is the size of the hole. And, you know, we've talked about maybe cutting them a little bit larger. You know, we, we had that discussion. I was concerned that the volume of recyclables will go down. We'll see that over time. Whether people are taking a benefit of this service or they're going to go a different route, whether throwing in their trash or dumping it someplace else along highways, along the roads. We don't want that. I get pictures sent to me all the time where people are just dumping their bags right by the bins. And not even emptying them, which, you know, is unacceptable.
The holes were used to help the, to help take the choice out of the residents. When employee, or when residents have a two foot, like two foot hole, they don't have to concern themselves if it's recyclable or not. With the hole that we are providing, if it fits in that hole, we have the ability to recycle it. That is the key. And it's not taxpayer funded. That is the other key. So many people think they're entitled to this, that it's taxpayer funded. It is not taxpayer funded. This is through the revenues of the landfill, recycling and the landfill and the transfer station.
So Jason, last comment on it. I think that you, people should understand that it is taxpayer funded. Because you're correct that it doesn't come out of property tax. But to the extent that your organization makes money, it's, it's ability to put more into the general fund. And I think maybe we want to frame, I understand what you're saying. It's not, it's not taxpayer funded through the real estate tax. But I think we want to get our constituents to understand that when they recycle properly, they're helping to reduce their tax burden. Because by doing so, you can make, your organization can make more money and you can put that 1.9 million into the general fund. I think if, if constituents understood it in that language, maybe they would understand it. But it's going to take a lot of education. And I appreciate what you're saying. I'm not trying to contradict you. I'm just trying to say that if we frame it in a way that they have a relationship to it, we might be able to get more cooperation.
And that, sir, that 1.9 million is based off the tipping, the ton to go across the landfill scales.
Right. But what I mean is that everything you do down there at the end of the day
Has an impact, yeah.
Has an impact, right? I understand that and that it's not recycling per se, but the money you make or lose in recycling affects everything else too, right?
In, in essence, yes, sir. It all, it's all, it all helps our bottom line.
Right.
And like I said, I, I'm very passionate for behalf of my employees. Last week, I was down on the sort line myself. So we, we really, we need to educate, educate, educate and get some of the myths, put the rest on the subject.
Yeah, and we should try not to beat up too much because, look, I'll be honest with you. If you had said to me, could you recycle the plastic swimming pool, I would say, well, it can't fit into that hole, obviously. But I hope we can recycle it. It's plastic, you know, but you can't. So, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept the agreement.
I'll move to approve.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry.
Commissioners, lastly is six point one six. This is the amendment with the agreement that we have with accent wire tie. Of course, the pricing of steel has gone through the roof, but we now have new pricing given to us from accent wire. We purchased 12 gauge, 10 gauge and metal strapping. These materials are all priced on 100 pound. And we typically buy once or twice a year from them to use it in our balers. For, of course, cardboard, new spring, aluminum, plastics and so forth. We have to put plastic or metal banding or 12, actually a 12 gauge wire around all them bales to hold them together.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry.
John Lovell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Six point 17, Volun-Rilin settlement agreement.
Morning, John. State your name and what department you're in.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lovell, Deputy Director for the Planning Department. So this is an agreement to formally end the Marsh Hill Bridge project. It's between Riling Construction, Larson Design Group and of course, the county. Combination of high water events, bridge beams that were slightly out of skew, out of spec, I guess, I'd, I'd say once put on the structure led to some cost escalation over the entirety of the project. And while PENDOT did cover a majority of those cost increases, the county and Larson did have to make up for, for some of the remaining ineligible expenses. So that, that's where we end up with this agreement. The $20,000 that the county have, we'll, we'll put into the into ending, I guess, this, this project. But it's important to note that no general funds are going to be utilized for this. It'll be liquid fuels funding. And that, you know, in the grand scope of this, it is a $2.2 million project of which we only had 5% local cost share.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This has been a long time for you on that one. This litigation and it, and it got resolved, so.
Yeah, I, I think this, this turned out to be pretty positive overall.
Yeah. Okay. I have a motion to accept.
Second.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, Beth Baylor, voting on the purchase of free licenses with APCO International. Beth?
Good morning, Catherine.
Good morning, Beth.
This is for FCC frequencies for the radio project. It's due to the expansion of the number of towers that we're getting through the radio project. The licensing for the new sites are needed and it is a budgeted item for the radio project.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Beth, how far on a, you know, how far do you think you are on completing the radio project? Like 30% or?
Uh, no, the, the equipment is all pretty much done, ready to go. We are with the, you know, get the steel now with today with the, we're doing the steel. The survey and engineering is all done. We'll be doing the, the RFPs here very shortly for, to start, you know, breaking ground and doing some building. By this time next year, I would say we'll be doing our final sign off. I imagine everything will be actually in place before then, I would hope. But we, you don't do your final testing until you have leaves on trees. Because that's when you have the most interference because of the leaf on tree effect. So we won't do our final testing and sign off on it until, you know, next, next year when the leaves are on the trees. But I mean, I'm very happy with how we're moving now. It seems like things are finally moving along. They definitely went slow for a while, but we're moving now.
Yeah, thank you. It's a big project.
It, it certainly has been painful at times, but yes, I, I'm very happy with where we're at now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Here you can have no further comment. I have a motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry.
Commissioners, comment?
Just like to add, and I'll be saying this every week, contact your representatives. HR1 is not acceptable. It is a federal power grab over the people of this, our nation. And we, we cannot tolerate to have this bill passed as it's presented.
Yeah, just as, as 9% of the last bill went towards COVID, 10% of this bill goes towards infrastructure. Only 10% of the estimated $2 trillion they're looking to approve and spend.
So last week, we had a call with the Department of Health about the vaccines and one of the, you know, one of the questions constituents have asked us is why can't we have a mass vaccine center here in like Cumming County? And what we learned is that the places where the mass vaccine centers were set up were really set up before the federal government changed the way it's sending the vaccines out. So, and those commitments were made before. And you can correct me if, if I misspeak, but I think I, I pretty much have it paraphrased. That, that those commitments were made for state college and so forth because the three of us thought, you know, heck, people are not going to drive to state college for vaccination. So the federal government has made agreements with Rite Aid, CVS, all sorts of pharmacies and other large retail centers. I, I think Sam's Club and some of the other places.
Wise Markets.
Wise Markets. So they, they decided that rather than going through mass vaccination centers, they would take the approach of trying to hit large areas, especially the rural areas with many local retailers. And I guess there's some, some logic to that. The question is, do people know about it? And certainly, you can find out about it if you go online and you just put into Google, where can I get a vaccine in like Cumming County? You will pull up many, many places. Barb Hemmendinger did a dashboard of places. She's one of the groups in the, one of the people in the Let's End COVID group that's still requesting that the commissioners allocate 50,000 for a education campaign. I think Mr. Ruth, the, the article seemed to imply that the money had been allocated. The money has, has not been allocated, just to clarify that. And they're still, still requesting that. But, but the, the Department of Health said, look, we can work with you and, and the, the catch is that whichever provider participates in a mass vaccination center has to use the allotment that it gets. And, and our Public Safety Department is working with UPMC to try to see. And, and the Let's End COVID group has also been trying to reach out. So I guess what I, what we really are trying to encourage people, get a vaccine. Get a vaccine. If you're not sure about whether you want to get a vaccine, try to get some education about it. Meaning that, you know, read about it, read about the, I think the, the favorables outweigh the negatives. I, I just received a text recently, this just a couple of minutes ago. PA has COVID variants. B117, also known as the UK variant, 635 cases in Pennsylvania. And B1351, also known as the South African variant, which is six cases. So hopefully, getting the vaccine will protect people against that and help us get to 80% to herd immunity. So I hope, I hope, I hope that the commissioners will still consider this, this education program. I think that we can teach people and give, just like we spoke about the education with the, with the landfill. Education is the key to getting people, I think, to understand, you know, the benefits of having it. But it was a good call with the Department of Health and, and the, the three of us participated along with Kelly Robinson from our EMA and Jeff Hutchins, our Director of DPS. So we'll continue to move forward and I, I think the latest I had heard on, had a text on the percent of people vaccinated. I, I'm concerned because Sun Gazette had an article on the 26th of March saying that only 35% of older people are fully vaccinated, ranking Pennsylvania near the bottom nationally. Now, since that time, things have improved. So it's the kind of thing we have to watch on a day to day basis. But I, I truly hope that our, all of our citizens will get vaccinated. Especially where we're seeing people under 40 now beginning to get the virus. It's in greater numbers than the older folks, so. We'll keep standing out there encouraging them.
Any other comments?
I have MC Green, oh, are you guys done?
Yes.
MC Green, sorry to complain, but cannot see, speak, the speakers at the podium unless they stand close. I believe that all who address the commissioners and the members of the public who are viewing virtually need to come to the podium and not speak from the audience. And do we have an energy expert on the county staff who can advise us about the current and future sources of energy in the event of an emergency? If so, can the public participate in this evaluation?
Well, we certainly will make sure that people move closer.
Yeah.
And so that they, she can see it. And I don't know that we have an energy expert, but we, we are in touch with the state who would, yeah.
Right. We'd be in touch with FEMA.
Right.
But I already sent the question to DPS and we'll get it addressed.
Okay. So the question's been sent to the Department of Public Safety to try to get an answer.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, anybody from the public like to speak? Karen, you come up and please introduce yourself. And you can take your mask off if you choose. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Ms. Edner. Hope everybody had a nice holiday and moving into spring. I just wanted to stop by two things. I wanted to touch base with, with you folks on what is the status of the reimbursement for the FEMA category B. The last email we've exchanged with Kelly Robinson was the 19th of March. There have been emails going back and forth, back and forth between Kelly, between Maya, and we're trying to get an idea of what is the status. So if, if one of those phones So if, if one of those folks would have the opportunity to touch base with us and let us know what they found out from Pima. Um, Ms. Robinson directed us to resubmit information. I mean, we've submitted in October, we submitted in November. So if there's someone who could please get back to us and let us know, is there something yet that we need to provide from our end in order to get that ball rolling? Or just kind of where did the wheels fall off so we can work as a team to get the wheels put back on? My other question.
The sheriff's still across the street?
Or did they move?
No, he's across the street.
All right, gotta get my permit renewed. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. That's all I had.
Karen, the, the, cause I think, I, I was on the phone call and I think Commissioner Medgar might have been too. What, what is the amount that is, is still, was still, you're waiting on the?
I honestly can't tell you the amount, Rick. If I did, I'd be misinforming you. I really don't know. Like I said, I know the last email was on the 19th of March and we've not heard anything since then, so.
We'll have Kelly follow up and find out what's going on.
That would be great if her or Jeff or somebody could get back to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
I don't know where the camera is. Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street, wherever you are inside room.
Move this way. There you go.
Thank you, Karen.
Excuse me, one second. Karen?
Yes.
Today is Tuesday. If you don't hear from Kelly by Thursday, let us know.
Will do. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Uh, one thing, not why I came here for, uh, for some time, I've been saying about, uh, trying to have education about recycling, get somebody to go around to the schools. Earth Day is coming up, 1/22nd. I realize it's too close now and there may or may not be in person, but, uh, I'd like to see better education. Because some of the things I've thought were recyclable, I found out, uh, are not. So, you know, I'm trying to do my part. I got single stream recycling. Last week, you brought up the COVID, uh, numbers for the county. I gotta go through the bushes a little bit on this to get to my point. I tried to provide copies so it can be put into the record. Today, I'm going to talk about three words: faith, morals, constitutional. I'll treat, I, I'll try to keep my comments within the time limit. Faith is believing in something you can neither prove nor disprove. I cannot prove or disprove the existence of God. Morals are morality, something one does even if no one is watching or will ever know you did or didn't do. Constitutional means allowed, lawful, legal. Therefore, unconstitutional would be, would mean not allowed, unlawful, and illegal. From the United States of America State Department official website, I submit to you, which I provided a copy, uh, uh, for the county commissioners to potluck. The Indian Removal Act, from the website. The US government used treaties as one means to displace Indians from their tribal lands, a mechanism that was strengthened with the Removal Act of 1830. In cases where this failed, the government sometimes violated both treaties and Supreme Court rulings to facilitate the spread of European Americans westward across the continent. I'm bringing this up because I want y'all to know where I'm coming from. Next, I remind the commissioners documents I've provided, already provided about the Commonwealth of, of Pennsylvania rulings by our state Supreme Court, where the court ruled not once but twice that use of royalties from fracking on state lands was to be used only for environmental mitigation efforts and any other purposes were unconstitutional. Uh, that's from the Bay Journal. I provided a copy of the most recent one where it says that too, just. So it can be in the record. People don't think I'm just coming up with fake news out of nowhere. Why do I bring these things up? I can clearly show the United States of America has violated its own constitution and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania also has violated its constitution. Why does this matter to us at the county level or the personal level? It demonstrates the government at both the federal level and the state level do not care about faith in the government to be moral or legal or its actions or lack thereof. So where am I going at with this? I mean, what can you and I, what can you and I as minor players do about it? We do not control the federal government or the state government. I shall show you where you three county commissioners have a definite role in taking some sort of action. A year ago, the governor ordered nursing homes to accept COVID-positive people into them, even if they did not want to. But less than 48 hours prior to this order, the Secretary of Health, Rachel Levine, removed their mother from a nursing home. Now, I assume the Secretary of Health and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have at their disposal experts in health and medicine. So therefore, the Secretary of Health, Rachel Levine, knew or should have known the inherent risk of placing COVID-positive people in nursing homes. And demonstrated this prior knowledge by removing their own mother from a nursing home before the order took effect. But how does this affect you, the county commissioners? Well, early on in the nurse, early on, the nursing home in Jersey Shore was the single place in Lycoming County that caused most of the deaths. I do have this where I printed it out, uh, just so y'all know. Our, our county, your county, you three are the ones we elected to protect your citizens. What actions are you three going to do about it? I think I have shown that the government knew they were putting your citizens at risk of illness and death. Therefore, I'm requesting the Lycoming County Commissioners take legal actions against the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to seek compensation for the illnesses and wrongful deaths directly attributed to the order by Governor Wolf. If I am to have faith in the government to do the moral and constitutional thing, I hope and pray that you three will do the right thing and stand up for what was done on your watch in your county. In short, to accidentally kill someone is manslaughter. To purposely kill someone is murder. To purposely kill a select group of people is genocide. I personally believe Governor Wolf and Rachel Levine conspired to commit acts of genocide by ordering COVID-positive patients into nursing homes against the wishes of said nursing homes. Didn't, did not the guards at Auschwitz play, play part in the Holocaust? I was just following orders. This morning, I went online, I printed out an old article from Tuesday, May 12th of last year. We jumped to 57 deaths in nursing homes, uh, uh, in the county. And as of today, from the state's own website, it, sorry, my printer cut it off, but they're saying 179 people from nursing homes in Lycoming County have died. I'm not sure if that includes the workers that got it from patients, but you knew last week how many people in Lycoming County died? I want to say it was 250-ish? So, you know, we're talking 180 people out of 250 people-ish died in nursing homes. That's wrong. If that's not singling out a group of people, uh, I don't know what constitutes genocide, you know? So, I'm hoping that y'all will do something about this. And I intend to provide all this information to the Sun Gazette, so that way maybe some pressure will be brought against these governors that purposely, willfully, and knowingly, uh, issued orders that they knew or should have known would cause untimely deaths, not just here in Pennsylvania, look at New York. They didn't know they were killing people, then why'd they try to hide how many people died?
So just, Solicitor, are you still on the phone?
I gotta go.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, I think to answer Mr. Miller's question, I don't, and you correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we have standing to sue. I think that would have to be done by a relative of the, of someone who died in the home. Would you think that's correct or incorrect?
That sounds correct to me, Commissioner.
So in other words, we, we don't have the, if we sued, we don't have the legal standing, meaning we're not, uh, a, a party that's been harmed. We've been harmed in the moral sense, is what you're telling us, but we haven't suffered a legal harm. Someone who has a family member who went into the home or who was directed by the state to go to the home would have standing to sue the state for, uh, you know, I don't know whether they would prevail, but just correct me if I, I want to clear this up so you just understand where we're coming from. You know, I don't want you to, it's not that we don't appreciate you bringing it to our.
So if I go out and cause untimely deaths of people, the county sheriff isn't going to come over and do an investigation?
Well, it depends. I mean, the, the.
There needs to at least be an investigation and that would fall under the, the law.
But believe it or not, the sheriff doesn't have the authority to investigate.
The Department of Health would do the investigation on what happened at that nursing home.
Okay, well then, let's get the Department of Health over there. I think y'all have, can ask for that.
You're, you're saying the Department of Health was.
Well, whoever it is, I don't have time. I don't have the ability to figure out whose job is what.
The, uh, what Garth brought to our attention.
Right.
What was going on up there and, you know, whether the Department of Health is negligent or not, you don't know.
Yeah. I just, I just want you to, to, so that you can at least understand, we, we don't have as much power. We, and I'm not passing judgment on whether what you're saying is correct or incorrect. I'm just saying to you that we don't have the ability to go into court because we are not.
But y'all do have the ability to investigate.
Absolutely, we, we will.
And I think it's something that needs to be looked at, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Scott, I'm not trying to minimize.
I, I'm not saying each and every one of those deaths was preventable. I'm not implying that. I don't mean, you know, mean to imply that. But how many were? And, and what if it was your family member? I mean, I didn't have any family members die from it, you know? I've had friends in other places die from COVID. But, uh, at some level, I feel the government needs to say, hey, look, you know? And, uh, I'm a believer in the role of government is to do for people what they cannot or will not do for themselves. You know, laws are written for, not for the 90% of the people that do the right thing, it's for them 10% that don't do the right thing.
Right.
And, and, you know, to have 179 different lawyers all start investigating this, it would bob down and just take forever, whereas I don't see it inappropriate for the county to investigate and, and draw their conclusions independently and, and provide that, you know, like, what if you found out that one person shouldn't have died? Would you, do you have a moral obligation to go, hey, Scott, your loved one died there and shouldn't have. You have cause for action. I can't take it, you have to.
Yeah.
You know?
No, I understand, Scott, and I'm not trying to minimize. I'm trying to say, I mean, the, the auditor general probably has the authority to get the exact, to investigate the, in terms of the numbers. And the attorney general probably has the authority to, to seek prosecution and prosecution. I, I, you know.
But this happened in your county.
Right.
And if the county commissioners were to say, we want this looked into.
Yeah.
It's going to carry a lot more weight than Joe Schmuck, you know, John Q taxpayer says, I want it looked into.
Right, no, absolutely, and, and.
And, and I don't think it's an inappropriate role for the county commissioners.
No, I just wanted to clarify, because you said you wanted us to, to sue the state, I think is the term.
Yes, yes.
And so I was just trying to clarify, be it our ability to sue or not to sue. We could certainly.
Do we ask questions?
Ask questions, but legally, I don't know that we would be able to move forward with a lawsuit because I don't think we'd be able, we'd be bounced out of court, is what I'm saying. But I, I don't know, Solicitor, you can tell me if I'm wrong.
Maybe it's not sued, but, you know, somehow, somehow, some way.
Yes.
The people that made these decisions need to be held accountable, whether civilly or criminally. They need to be held accountable. And, you know, I can't worry about what happened in Georgia. I can't worry about what happened in Harrisburg. But I can worry about what's happening here.
Yes.
Under your watch, under your domain.
Yeah, yes.
You know?
No, you're absolutely right. Thank you for putting that all together. I mean, the, the information about the Removal Act and so forth. You were trying to give us a little history here.
Well, it's just to point out that, you know, you know, I don't want to go through each and every time the United States of America's done something.
Right.
It knew it shouldn't be doing. I didn't want to go through each and every time the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has done something it knew it shouldn't be doing. I just wanted to make sure that I provided that instance of, here you go, here you go. Uh, I did not put into that package the information I pulled off of the state's website this morning, so. Uh, I assume you can just put in a link to the COVID test as of today.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
You too, thank you.
Sorry to be so controversial.
No, you're not controversial, Scott. What you're telling us is that history is going to judge what happened here when you talk about the Removal Act and the other thing. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
You too, thank you. Any other comment?
No.
Okay.
April 13th is.
Yep, thank you. So, uh, we have completed the agenda, so our meeting is adjourned. Uh, we've completed the agenda, so there's no meeting on Thursday. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 13th at 10 a.m. right here in this room. Thank you.
Well, it's one in here.
Really?
Yeah, I, I have a lawsuit on.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'm thinking they didn't put on the AC yet.
Is it Ryland or Rea?
Ryland.
R-R-Y-L-A-N-D?
Yeah.
R-R-R-Y-L-A-N-D?
Correct.
So what, what's going on there?
Well, there was a lawsuit by Ryland against.